Ready to go?
Yep.
Call this meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to thank you everybody for attending today's Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting, June 13th, 2017. We will move to the consent agenda, which comprises of approval of minutes for May 16th, 2017, approval of payroll for June 30th and June 12th, 2017, approval of claims for May 17th, 2017, and the treasurer's monthly report, April 30th, 2017. And then we also have on their consent agenda Memorial Opera House, Scott McDonald, director, some artistic services agreements for Mark Coleman, Zach Flash, Kyle Lidkey, Jake Tillman, David Markley, Bryce Hendricks, Jennifer London, and Michael.
Chukow.
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 Chukow, thank you. So that is the items on the consent agenda. I'll open the floor to the board.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second for the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And those are all for?
Joseph.
And that opens when?
July 14th around 2:30.
Get your tickets now, they're selling fast. Great.
They're almost sold out.
Great.
Terrific.
Great. All right, new business. Let's move to the commissioners. First up is DLZ, Larson Danielson Payment Application Number Nine, in the amount of $32,093.82 for the new animal shelter. Hi, Michael.
Good morning, commissioners.
My question would be, is that the final app?
It is not. There's going to be pay app number 10, which will be followed then by, I believe, 11, Stephen, which will be the retainage.
Retainage, so 10 and 11. 11 retainage, okay. Anything you want to add, Mike, or anything?
I do not.
Pretty straightforward. Any questions from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
While we're on this, can I go ahead and?
Sure.
Um, there will be a public grand opening to the shelter on Saturday, June 24th, and that is going to take place from noon until 4:00. There will be 50% off all adoption fees that day, so it's a great day to adopt a pet. There will be tours and light refreshments, and if you do decide to go, we recommend possibly parking in the Expo Center lot because we don't have a gigantic lot and we figure that we will have pretty good attendance. So, hope to see you on the 24th. You should really come check it out, it's pretty cool.
Yep.
Especially if you've seen the old one.
And I'd also like to add on, since we're on the animal shelter bandwagon, buildings, facilities, Don and IT have been working diligently to try and get the old building taken care of. We found out we have a fiber line running through there, so we had to do some rerouting and everything before we started tearing it down. But hopefully here, in the near future, we will tear down our past for that animal shelter. So we're looking forward to getting that done, too, so.
Oh, and also, we're right in the middle of a fundraiser that the Health Department is putting on.
Yep.
Well, not a fundraiser, but a donation campaign, and there are boxes in the various county buildings.
Yes, there are, and it's going very well. My office is starting to look like an aisle in touch marks.
So it's working.
Yeah, great way to donate.
Thank you, Brad.
Next on the list, animal shelter ordinance revision. This is the second reading. We've already did the first reading at our last meeting. Open up the floor for any comments, issues, suggestions, ideas. For the floor for any motions?
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the animal shelter ordinance revision. This is second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have a new ordinance. Tony? Saw you somewhere in here.
She's right there.
Oh, there she is, she's hiding. Foundation Earning Fund, this is the first reading. Scott, you want to give us a little bit of an update on what that all is?
Yeah, basically, it's a first reading for an ordinance that would create a fund for the receipt of the earnings of the Porter County Government Nonprofit Charitable Foundation. It's just a place to put when the foundation earnings are going to be transferred to the county. This is the fund that they would be transferred to. Just one of those necessary housekeeping items that we need to kind of backfill as we keep moving on with the foundation. Obviously, this was the first year we had any earnings from the foundation itself, so that's why we're doing the fund this year.
So, some of you who come to these meetings often, some of you that don't, we have to now, since we're moving into an ordinance, we have to conduct a public hearing. So with that, I am going to move out of the commissioners' meeting, and now we're going to open up a public hearing. You are here to speak for or against this petition ordinance resolution. We will ask you to come forward, please state your name and address for the record. We will give each person for or against, three opportunities to speak. At the end of the, at the end, we will close the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance second time? Third and final time, is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance? So now we'll move to, is there anybody here wishing to speak in opposition of this ordinance? First call. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Second call. Anybody wishing to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Third and final call. The public hearing is now closed. Open up the board, open up the floor to the board of commissioners.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for first reading of establishing a Foundation Earning Fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have a contract for animal shelter services between the Porter County Government and the City of Portage, Indiana. I believe that the agreement that we're looking at has been signed by the City of Portage, so it's up to us now to put the cherry on top. Scott, you've looked at this contract?
I drafted it and went through the process with the city. The city signed it on May 23rd at their Board of Works and approved it. It is ready for commissioner action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the contract for the animal shelter services between Porter County and the City of Portage. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thanks for sticking with us, Scott.
Next on the agenda is the following bridge projects for consultant services and staff This is bridge inspections, which are required. Well, we'll just have, we'll have Bob come up and give us the narrative on all this. Thanks, Bob.
All right, first one on the list is bridge inspections. Federal Highway Administration requires us to do this every two years for our bridges. It's a cycle, and when we select a consultant, it's for two inspection cycles. It'll be for 2018 and 2020. And it is, like I said, a federal mandate. It's for all bridge structures that are greater than 20 feet in length or span. On that, we had nine proposals that were submitted to us on this, and I would say that we had a lot of really good proposals on this, but one did stand out on this, and that is from United. And staff would like to give the recommendation that we can start speaking with United.
What, what was in the proposal made to stand out?
What was in the proposal? They are going to get a lot of the information, they're going to be working with a lot of the information, and as we discussed earlier, it's going to come in and they're going to give it to us on GIS. A lot of this data, they're going to work with us and with our GIS people to actually get this on as a layer, so that we, it's just to click away all the information that we would have.
And are you recommending them for inspections on these three bridges here?
No, this would be the entire bridge inspection program.
Oh, okay.
That we have to do.
So that's for our whole program?
This is for the 126 bridges that we have.
Okay.
We're starting on this early, we have to have this going, and the inspection started by April of next year. The first inspection has to be done. With the contracts that we have to go through and everything, it takes time getting that through Endot with all of the signatures, so we wanted to get a head start on this, so that way we would have contracts done, hopefully by January, and then a letter of proceed out shortly after that.
Okay.
But our choice to sit down and start talking with a consultant first is United.
Okay. Just so folks, for the record, we'll read in, Bridge 84 is 800 South over Dog Lake Ditch, Bridge 126 is 700 North over Salt Creek, and Bridge 135 is Old Porter Road over Salt Creek.
Okay. One thing is Bridge 135 is a rehabilitation. As of right now, we don't believe it's going to be a total replacement. We're hoping that it's just going to be a rehabilitation, which is just a replacing of the deck.
Okay.
Do you want me to go through each one of these?
Um, no, I don't think it's necessary. I mean, do you think we should, do you think we need to, or?
Well, I think we probably need to do the motion on the bridge inspections first and then dive into these other, because these other replacements are different consultants, correct?
Correct.
Right.
We'll make a motion to approve United Consulting for the bridge inspection.
Second. We have a motion and a second to select United Consulting for the county's bridge inspection program. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we'll go, why don't you give us a brief summary of the bridges, because we're, a lot of people that sort of come to these meetings, we're going to be talking about, a lot about bridges here in the next couple of years, because we got some yeoman's work to do here. So, Bob, take it over.
Okay. Bridge 84 is, as mentioned, is on 800 South. It's between this town of Hebron and Lake County Line Road. It's, from past bridge inspections, it had a sufficiency rating of around 19%. And I guess to explain that, when you get below 60% on a sufficiency rating, then you need to start looking at rehabilitation or replacement on this. It is recommended from the last bridge inspection report we have for replacement on this, it is in bad shape. I was down there with the students on it, there was a number of things with it. The waterway is probably opening is inadequate on that, but it definitely needs to be replaced.
So on, so on Bridge 84, you, so then go into what you're asking for.
What we're asking is to look at a consultant. Right now, we cannot do this work in-house at this time. We're asking for a consultant to come in and help us with the actual design of this, on this, and we're going to sit down and try and work out the actual procedures and what we want done on this. With that, actually do a bridge replacement design for it, and then we would take the documents and then go out and put it for bid.
All right, you've received proposals for that?
We received five different proposals for this particular bridge, and our recommendation for this particular bridge for us to sit down and start talks with would be Ciobra. I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that name right.
Where are they at?
They have an office in Michigan City, but I think the main corporate office is Chicago.
Any other questions for Bob on Bridge 84 replacement?
You give them one at a time?
Yeah, we'll do them one at a time, because I think they're different, I believe there's different consultants for each bridge, right?
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Second. So we have a motion and a second for Ciobra for Bridge 84 replacement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bridge 126 replacement, Bob?
Bridge 126 is 700 North, it's over Salt Creek. It's just east of State Road 149. On that, again, from the bridge inspection report, it had a sufficiency rating of 8.2%. It does need to be replaced. It's a very inadequate waterway opening on this one. Again, we received five RFPs on this one, and after reviewing it, staff is giving a recommendation on this one for USI, that we start talking with USI Consulting. Again, it's hiring of a consultant to actually do the bridge design work for us. We'll sit down and work out the parameters of this and what we want them to do, and then give us the documents, so that way we can take it to bid for replacement of this bridge.
Any additional questions of Bob?
That's a, that's a pretty popular bus route, school bus route.
Right.
Is there, will that, will that, do we plan on reconstructing or replacing that before school starts or after school starts?
After.
After, if we can. There's a few things on this one. One of the things on this is, one, we are going to be pushing to get this done at a certain amount of time. Salt Creek is a salmonoid stream, so we're going to be very limited on when we can actually get in that stream to do work.
It's a what stream?
Salmonoid.
Salmonoid. It has salmon in it?
Yes.
Salt Creek. That's all you had to say.
It has, I'm sorry, it has salmon on it.
Might have some trout, too, or guppies.
So, I, DNR, depending on how the design goes and everything, what they do, DNR could restrict us to getting into that channel during certain times of the year. The goal would be yes, definitely, after.
Okay.
School is out.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve Bridge 126 with USI as a consultant for this project. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bridge 135?
Bridge 135, this is Old Porter Road over Salt Creek on this, and right now, we're saying that's a rehabilitation. The deck needs to be definitely replaced on this one. The consultants that we're going to recommend here, and we had five RFPs that came in on this one, mentioned within our RFP something that caught our attention and stood out, and that was the fact that we need to do non-destructive testing on the walls of this bridge. It's no sense of putting a new deck on the old walls if the old walls cannot, no longer structurally handle it. So, that is the reason why we're coming out with the recommendation that we sit down with Structure Point on this particular bridge.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion? Second. And a second for American Structure Point to, for consultant on Old Porter Road over Salt Creek. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Just a little narrative to wrap that up. The board of commissioners in the county have used, in the past, we've, we've sort of been a one-man band on our bridges with our consultant and everything, and we've sort of taken a new direction, and we're, we're starting to go out to the market a little bit, and, well, not a little bit, a lot bit, and we're, we're looking for some, some new consultants, and we felt that these three bridges was a great opportunity to come out, test the market, see what's out there, get some good pricing, and then also maybe find some new consultants and companies out there that we haven't worked with in the, in the past that can offer us same or better services for less money. So, it's all part of the reorganization of highway and stormwater, and this sort of kicks us off on that direction. So, that's, that, that gives a little bit of a narrative. I probably should have done that in the beginning, but that's how we're going to wrap that up for today. So, next, we'll move to quotes for the traffic analyzer. That's you, too. Bob, why don't you give us a brief description on what traffic analyzer is and why we're doing it?
Okay. What this is, is it's actually counting the traffic. One of the things we're having to do right now, currently, the Highway Engineering had a program where they were counting every other year either the traffic going across our bridges, which we have 126 of those, or they were counting the traffic at our railroad crossings on that. I want to expand that program significantly to the point where we're counting all of our roads, and this is fitting into Pazer. With the new community crossings matching grant that is coming out through Endot and the state of Indiana, they are looking at whether or not we have part of the traffic information within the Pazer program. And when we were having discussions on this, we were trying to look at how we can take the traffic data that we would collect on this, along with the, what they refer to as the functional classification of the road, whether it's local or a collector arterial, put all of this together in Pazer to make a good management program and how we determine what roads really need to be high priority with paving. To be able to do that, we really need to get out and do an analysis on the roads with the traffic. These counters can also give an average speed as far as vehicles on that. So, with this, we did get three quotes, and the one that we are requesting to go with is the Hoosier Company Incorporated out of Indianapolis. One of the things we also liked about this particular item, too, is it's also Bluetooth capable. We can actually download the information off of these and be able to keep people out of traffic, if we want to keep it out of there for, the counter out there for a couple of days.
Interesting. I would just, again, just to, for the, for the record, this, again, is part of the county's deep dive that we're doing into our highway department. Pazer, which we approved here a couple of years ago, is a software program, which is a road management software program. The county now has that online. We've got it up and running now. Part of the work that the H, we talked about them earlier, our interns, our college engineer interns is doing this summer, is they're actually out on all of our roads gathering data, gathering information, which we will use to either put into Pazer or put into GIS.
GIS.
So what we're moving towards here in the county is a more analytical approach as to what roads we pave, when we pave, the type of roads that we're going to pave. There's been a serious discussion going on now with the board of commissioners about moving away from chip and seal and going more to paving, full-time of paving of roads, and trying to move away from chip and seal. In order to do that, you have to know widths of roads, drainage, traffic on roads, it, you know, any type of software program is, is only as good as the information that you feed into it. So we're in the process of doing a lot of data collection, and hopefully here in, in the next several months, we'll have all this data put together to where now when we decide to pave, pave roads and what roads we're going to pave, it's done from an analytical standpoint. How many, is it a, is it a main arterial road? Is this a secondary arterial road? Is it a local road? Is it, you know, the, these designations of these type of roads will all go into this system, and, and if, if kept up properly, it should be giving us really good data that we can analyze and budget and be able to determine what roads are going to be done every year. So, it's, it's something I know that isn't real fun to talk about, but it's something I know from our perspective, this has been a high priority for us. The other thing it's going to do is not only give us information to work with internally here, Pazer is more of our system, but the GIS is a system that any citizen can get on in the county on our website and can, can pull up information and see properties, who owns them, and now we'll be able to enhance it with structures, all kinds of things, bridges, everything is going to be added onto this GIS system. So, we're not only enhancing it for our use, but we're also enhancing it even more for the public's use. So, as everything moves towards more online and more web-based, that's what we're trying to do to become more relevant. So, it has been a huge project. It's been a lot of heavy lifting, but the highway department, stormwater department, our interns, everybody's really working together to make this happen, and we're really excited about it. I think it's going to make, make a lot of these decisions up here much more quantitative, much more analytical, and much fair, and no politics. It's just going to be, these are the roads that need to be done because this is what the system says it does, and then we're going to be just worrying about making sure we're putting the right information in. That's, that's what we're going to need to worry about. So, sorry for the boring lecture, but we do like to let people know what we're doing as we move forward. It's exciting stuff to us, might not be to you folks, but we think it's going to push the county forward in a, in a big direction, and we're excited about it. So, there's my five-minute spiel, or maybe 10 minutes.
And I think the only thing you left out is, a lot of people don't realize, we have 800 miles of roads, so figuring out which ones need to be paved when we have a limited number every year, that's not an easy task. We need this information.
Yeah.
For the record, would you, you, we, you named the company you wanted to buy the traffic analyzer from?
Correct.
But just, for the record, will you clarify that we got quotes, who you got quotes from?
Oh, we received a quote from the Hoosier Company Incorporated, Jase Chandler and Associates, and TACCO.
And ultimately, Hoosier was the?
Hoosier was the lowest.
The lowest and met your specs?
Right. They're all the MC350 traffic counter and all of the equipment that goes with it, including software.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open the floor.
Motion to approve, Hoosier Company.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Hoosier Company quotes for the traffic analyzer. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Bob. Now we're going to move to Title VI Coordinator. I hereby recommend that Rhonda Young be the Title VI Coordinator.
Second.
Yeah, there we go. Hurry up and second it, if you can. All those in favor signify, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Rhonda Young is now the Title VI Coordinator for Porter County Government. Thank you, Rhonda. Next up, we have another ordinance, creating a non-reverting fund for a receipt of fees for discovery production for the Porter County Prosecutor's Office. This is first reading again, so we will.
Let me say a little bit of, I mean, basically what this is, place, again, a fund that would allow, the prosecutor's office has to produce discovery on a flash drive or a, or a CD of some sort with that. Expenses made, they then pass that expense on to whoever's requesting that discovery. When that is paid for, this is where the money would go back, so then therefore this could be the fund that would be kind of just the in and out of, it costs $50, so we charge $50, and this is where it goes back. So, this money previously, I believe, was being put into the Drug Task Force Fund, and so, some change. And so some changes were made there, so this is needed to keep this discovery money with the prosecutor's office.
All right, so we'll pause the commissioners' meeting. We'll now open and hold another public hearing. We're here to speak either for or against this ordinance. Again, each person, when we call, each person will have the opportunity to come up, state their name, their address, and they'll have an opportunity to address this court either in for or against. Is there anyone, to start off, is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this ordinance? Second call, anybody interested in speaking in favor of this ordinance? Third and final call, is there anybody interested in speaking in favor of this ordinance? We'll now move to the opposition. Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Second call, is there anybody here wishing to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Third and final time, anybody here wishing to speak against this ordinance? Public hearing is now closed. Open it up to the board. Any comments, questions?
Was there, did we receive any information what they, what the fee was wanting to be?
It's based upon, these are kind of the extraordinary discovery requests, so it's basically just whatever the cost was is what the cost would be.
Like copies?
Yeah, this is beyond the normal everyday discovery requests that are happening. This is more like a case, you know, a handful of cases that are, the discovery or the pictures or their video or whatever is so much more substantial, it creates additional costs to produce it. This isn't for your everyday run-of-the-mill misdemeanor case. Some of the words of the flash drive costs $10, and they're going to charge $10.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open the floor.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second for the first reading of a non-reverting fund for receipt of fees of discovery production for Porter County Prosecutor's Office. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Second reading will be at the next board of commissioners' meeting. Next up, the Health Department, Keith Wadda, Director Nancy Mathina, Office Manager and Attorney Dave Hohlenbeck, who is not going to be here. He talked to him prior. This is second reading, and this is an ordinance revising the Porter County Board of Health Fee Structure. We'll open it up, open it up to the board for any questions or comments to Keith. I'll open the floor. This is second reading.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion in a second for the ordinance revising the Porter County Board of Health Fee Structure. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Keith, thanks for the work that you did for us going out to Wake Robin and looking at that house. Appreciate it.
Porter County Substance Abuse Council, Don Pelk, Director, please come forward. Hi, Don.
Don couldn't be here today.
Oh, she's okay, well.
My name's Chris Byer. I'm on the board of Substance Abuse Council, and this is Stephanie Stevenson. She is an employee of Substance Abuse Council.
Stephanie Stevenson. Okay, floor is yours.
Well, excellent, thank you. As I said, we're representatives of Substance Abuse Council. Every three years, it's our responsibility or we're tasked with coming up with a community plan to combat substance abuse within Porter County. Each year, then we then revise that three-year plan and update it as necessary. That plan, we did submit a new three-year plan this year. It did go to the Governor's Commission to Combat Drug Abuse and the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. It was approved by them. And so then one of the next steps, and that kind of the final steps, is bringing that to you guys for approval. You as a body, the commissioners are responsible for appropriating the funds that we receive to the Substance Abuse Council. And then that's then basically the comprehensive community plan that we developed is used as kind of a roadmap, and people can apply for funds to combat substance abuse within in the community. Now, this particular, the funds that we use are countermeasure fees, and those are funds that are offender-based by the judges and go into a pool for us to use back into the community.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, how exactly are you using the funds? You know, it'd be nice to have some data here. Now, if I seem a little agitated, it's because this, it seems like this is progressively getting worse. But I don't hear anything new that we're doing, you know, from 24 months ago that would, you know...
The problem in the county, you say?
Yes.
The drug problem?
The drug problem, okay.
Okay.
Well, that's why we're here, correct?
Yes, absolutely. I didn't know if you were referring to something else, but, well, absolutely, I mean, we're, you know, the problem statements that we came up with in a plan are to address, you know, the prescription drug, opioid and heroin use, which is increasing absolutely in the community. We're also dealing with drug and alcohol is one of our problems.
Yeah, I guess what I'm asking is that address, what does that mean exactly?
Well, individuals, we as an entity of Substance Abuse Council are made up with members of the community from all different types of organizations. Could be law enforcement, could be therapeutic treatment, education-based. And so we all come together and the comprehensive plan is used and it kind of spells out certain things that we want to cover within the community to combat substance abuse. And so these individuals are able to, through various programs that they have, apply for funds, and then they're able to fund programs, and we combat it in a different array of ways, either through the police using increased controls, programs within the schools, therapeutic programs, maybe treatment providers are able to access funds and provide treatment programs that they maybe wouldn't have been able to do so if they didn't have those additional funds. Am I missing anything?
We go into schools, work with the kids, we work with the administration of the schools, we bring in programs. We have a youth group, and so we are together with them from the seven different counties, having youth summit in October. It's not necessarily going to be entitled drug, it's more health and awareness.
Are you maintaining any data that shows that we're making any kind of progress? Because, you know, we have law enforcement officials here in Porter County, you know, claiming it's our number one problem. So, and it was our number, supposedly our number one problem the year before and the year before that. So what I'm wondering is, what are we doing differently today than we were 24 months ago or 36 months ago that would give us some hope up here or the people paying these fees that we're progressing here and we're just not treading water?
What do you want to talk a little bit about that, kind of exit?
Well, a lot of what we do has to be evidence-based, programs that, as in other counties have worked, so we're trying those. We go into the schools and do focus groups. So we work with the kids. We went into Portage in Washington Township once a month for five months, starting in January. And then we get them to open up, and then we try to do something with what they're saying, give them another outlet instead of, instead of the drugs.
You know, some of that, we do a lot of education. I know some of the funds that the sheriff's video, heroin video, we helped fund completion of that as well. So it's, you know, getting out in the community and everything. But you're right, it is a huge problem, it's far-reaching, and it's not something that's solved, you know, within 24 months. It'll be an ongoing thing, and it bleeds into so many other areas. I mean, anybody in law enforcement will tell you that burglaries, thefts are all associated a lot of times with substance abuse because people are committing those offenses to get more money for these drugs.
Yeah, you're right, but it's, it would be helpful to us, the executive body of county government that are approving your ability to collect these fees, you know, just how much, I mean, I hear this, you know, it's the number one problem in Porter County. First of all, that is not correct. The number one crime in Porter County, far and away, is theft and larceny. Far and away. Now, how much is drug affect, drug abuse affecting that? We're not getting that information. I don't know. That would be helpful to us, and would be helpful to, you know, to receive from your organization, you know, say quarterly, you know, reports as to what you're all up to. So when we get questions asked of us, because we are, you know, we're the county commissioners, we have something to, you know, construct or, you know, knowledgeable to say. And right now, we're just saying, well, you know, we got this fund, you know, we, you know, we have the drug, Porter County Drug Coalition, and, you know, they're working at it. It'd be helpful to have a little more than that.
Sure. I think that would be no issue, and we'd be happy to provide even, you know, quarterly what programs we've done over that period of time, and what areas it's affected, and what population we've reached through that program, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
No, I think you have changed your board, and there's been a lot of changes in the last 24 months, right?
Yes, yes.
We just, we need to know more about those.
Well, it's exciting too, that previously it was just our director, and we brought Stephanie and another employee on, so they're able to do more in the office. And I think we've, our programming has increased dramatically, and so I think that is a good thing that we...
And I don't want to suggest that I didn't think you're not working hard at this. All I'm suggesting is, please share your information with us. You have, you know, we have our own resources, and if we're ever going to make a dent in this, everybody, it's going to be all deck on, all hands on deck.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I think, to just piggyback what Commissioner Biggs says, I think this is probably going to be the beginning of a lot more in-depth questions and data that we're going to be asking for, because we constantly hear up here, it's a huge problem, it's a huge problem, but everybody wants money, but nobody's really, you know...
We need more information.
You know, we need to have more of a strategic approach to this, rather than just trying to throw money at it and trying to get a headline that it's the number one problem in the county, and we keep throwing money at it. I think, I think that's where we're coming from. And fortunately, you were the first folks that happened to come up here and...
That's understandable, that you guys want to see where the money's coming from.
Yeah, I don't think it's any, I agree with Commissioner Biggs. There's nothing against what you're doing. We're just taking a different, we're looking at this, we all believe that it's a problem too, but if, we got to get past the headlines. We got to get more drilling into what we're going to do about this. And because, you know, we're spending a lot, you know, the sheriff and the jail is 45% of the county's budget. So, you know, we're spending a lot of money in the county already. You throw substance abuse and some of these other things on here, it, we're starting to tap out here. If we want to pave roads and we want to provide all these other services that we're required by, we got a new 911 system coming online the end of this year. So it's all sort of intertwined into everything, but I think we're going to be...
Because we have limited sources, the board up here, I don't, and I don't know how often you get to commissioners' meetings, but, you know, the beginning of the year here, we've just, you know, we've, there's going to be more checks and balances. There's going, you know, we're going to want more information before we make major decisions. And that's really benefit to you, in that because there's limited resources up here, we want to make sure that those resources are going toward our most pressing needs and not something that's made to be political.
Certainly. And we're happy to do so.
Thank you. We need to, did we, did we vote on this yet to accept it?
I'm making a motion to approve the plan.
Second. We have a motion in a second to approve the Porter County Substance Abuse State Plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, CJ Whitmer, Director of 911. This is for Tiburon, it's a software support maintenance agreement for CAD mapping, state interface, and mobile data. Good morning, CJ.
Good morning, Chris.
How you doing?
Doing okay.
Why don't you give us a rundown as to what this contract does and what it provides?
This is our annual software support agreement with formerly Tiburon, we'll probably always call it Tiburon, Tri-Tech bought them out a couple of years ago. This provides support for our big CAD system and dispatch, along with the CAD mapping products. It's an integrated product, but the mobile com software, which is the software that is loaded up on the laptops that you would see in the squad cars and fire apparatus and ambulances out around the county, as well as state interface, just denotes that there's an interface to be able to run for an officer, for a police officer to be able to run, B&amp;B information, a plate on a traffic stop, for example. So that's what, that's what this covers, is the support across all of those.
Any questions from any of the commissioners?
Scott, if you have to take a look at...
I have.
You're all right with it?
I am. Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second to approve the Tiburon Maintenance Agreement with E-911. CJ, is this, I'm trying to pull it up here, is this a one-year agreement or is this a little over than one year?
Twenty-one.
It's one year.
I'm looking at it.
Okay. Oh, I'm getting locked out again. It keeps doing that to me.
It expires January 31st of 18. Goes from 1/31 of 17 to 1/31 of 18.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, CJ.
Thanks, CJ.
Next up, Highway Department, Andy McKay. Andy has a request for additional appropriations from Fund 1172, Subfund 2293, major moves to account 2362 by two minutes in the amount of $750,000 for paving shortfall until Highway receives the community crossings grant. So Scott, why don't you just explain a little bit of what we're doing here? I know we have the President of the Council here, Mike Jess, and I just want to make sure that they understand what we're doing here. So it's...
Ultimately, the, we are anticipating receiving the community crossing grant this year, and that's what's part of our plans for the amount of mileage that's being paved in the county. The way, as that community crossing grant program is only, this is its second year, we've looked at the deadlines for when to submit and when we would get our approval and kind of the timeline for when that money would actually potentially show up here. And it kind of puts us late into October, November. We don't want to wait to do this paving until next spring. So what we are attempting to do here is basically do another additional out of major moves to cover the gap, basically, that we feel the community crossing grant is going to fill, so we could do the paving now during the summer. And then when this community crossing grant comes in, we just pay ourselves back into the major moves fund, so we can keep basically using this money in the, in the years it's supposed to be used, as opposed to having it built up and always be a year behind.
Correct.
And I think this year, Andy, what are we planning on paving total dollar amount? I know it's another big year for us.
It'll probably be just probably about three and a quarter million.
Yeah, 3.25 million that we'll use to pave this year. And is that including the grant?
Yes. Yes.
That would include the grant too?
Correct.
Okay, great. One of the other things that we're looking at too is that the bill that passed downstate this year, the highway infrastructure bill, that actually our local state representative who's representative up here, chairs the Department of Transportation for IDOT, we're starting to get some information out from this new bill, and it looks like we're going to be seeing going forward, as well as all the other communities, a significant increase in funding for road paving going forward for a long time. So obviously, we're excited about that, because we're going to be able to even ramp up our paving amount even more.
Exactly.
So highway is, you're coming on. We're getting busier and busier over there, so it's all good. So like to open up the floor to the commissioners for any other questions of Andy or what we're doing here?
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion in a second for a request for additional appropriation for Fund 1172, Subfund 2293, major moves to account 2362 by two minutes in the amount of $750,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Keep doing the good job.
Keep doing the good job. Development and stormwater management, Bob Thompson. I think we're moving into the plan commission part of the meeting. Good morning again, Bob.
First case is rezoned, this is second hearing, where the first hearing was approved to rezone a parcel of land from I-2 General Industry out to RR Rural Residential. Again, this is second reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for a rezon, I-2 General Industrial to RR, for petitioner Costandino Vassos.
Yes.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next.
Next is Tower Meadows subdivision. This came about due to some residents complaining within the development about the infrastructure not being completed out there. It's been a number of years since the roads have been worked on, it's, has not been accepted by the county as yet for maintenance on this, and I would say there's probably 30% of the lots still vacant out there for potential building out there on this. Plan Commission heard some of the complaints from residents out there about the infrastructure, the vacant lots not being maintained out there. Matter of fact, Highway Department was out there and mowed the right-of-way in front of the vacant lots just last week, or this week, and, last week, excuse me. And so, with that, the Plan Commission asked that Attorney McClure and I do some research out there, and we did on that. One, some of the past history on this is, there was a particular home builder that did go bankrupt out there for the second time during this. On this, they had about seven lots, some of them were being built on currently, so they basically walked away from these structures. One of them, right now, is a foundation that is totally open and has water in it, on it, which is a concern on that. And the other one, other remaining lots are owned by BUDS Plus. BUDS Plus also has the holdings for the letter of credit. We have $176,000 approximately in a letter of credit that we're holding that is set to expire in January of 2018. On this, Plan Commission, at their public hearing, forwarded a recommendation to the county commissioners to place a moratorium on this. The thought, too, was that this might catch people's attention on this, and it was very successful on that, because during that time, there was an ALTA survey going on out on the vacant lots, and the vacant lots are being proposed to be bought by another home builder and developer, and they're in that process, but they're waiting now because of this recommendation of a moratorium on this. And it has also caught the attention of the developer on this, and hence why Mr. Attorney Bill Ferengren is sitting over here. Also, I've been in conversations with Bill on this, so, that's where it stands. This subdivision was started a number of years ago, it does have an asphalt base on there, it's busted up, it's in need of maintenance on that. We even went out and received quotes on what it would take to repair the asphalt out there, and that arranged anywhere from $135,000 up to $186,000 that we received in bids, or estimates, I should say, on this to do that. So, stormwater work, we're estimating anywhere from $25,000 to $35,000 that needs to be done to complete stormwater out of that. A lot of that is maintenance, dealing with the pond that's in the northeast, northwest corner, excuse me, of the development, so...
Just erosion issues?
Erosion, erosion issues, yes.
Well, I think the subdivision kind of fell and had some hard times, and because of it kind of being caught in purgatory half the time, some of these things, stormwater, because the roads never got sent over, I mean, accepted, we, you know, that's kind of the trigger for stormwater to take over maintenance and et cetera, so I think at this point, what we have figured out is that stormwater, it has gone out, has done an inventory of the stormwater, you know, the infrastructure itself, the vast majority of that was put in, stormwater now needs to kind of go out there and start taking care of it, maintaining it, which is the number that Bob was suggesting earlier. I mean, ultimately, and we do have at least, I recognize at least one of the homeowners here, ultimately, Tower Meadows subdivision, to make it a fully functioning subdivision is for these remaining lots to be built on. Ultimately, I would rec, I've had a conversation with Attorney Ferengren, who represents BUDS Plus, or the owners of BUDS Plus. Ultimately, at this point, I don't have a problem kicking this to the next commissioners' meeting, that gives us three weeks or so, if not more. I mean, ultimately, what stormwater needs to take care of, the stormwater issue, ultimately, these lots need to be sold, they need to be developed, they need to have houses on them, and then that allows the roads to be, you know, the top coat to be put on, okay? Ultimately, I think the fly and the ointment there, so to speak, is our performance guarantee, I believe, is in the form of a letter of credit.
Correct.
That's going to expire before all of these remaining 30 to 35 homes are built. I think the three or four weeks or so between now and our next commissioners' meeting would be enough time for me to work with Attorney Ferengren to figure out a way that the county can feel protected as far as that infrastructure goes, plus, from the timing of that transaction on the sale, the potential sale of the lots to the new home builder, I don't think is happening between now and the next three or four weeks, and even if it did, it's not going to be pulling building permits between now and then anyway. I mean, because ultimately, what we, you know, I want to be clear, the Plan Commission and the Commissioners' Office are, we understand that ultimately, the new home buyer, the new home, the new lot buyer who's going to be building these homes is exactly to solve this subdivision. We just cannot be, the county cannot be put in a position where the binder coat and the top coat isn't put on at the end. So, if we can get that worked out, that solves our problem there, stormwater's being handled, and then as soon as this transaction were, if this transaction were to occur, now we have a new lot owner that we can then start enforcing, keeping the lots in a much better shape than they have been. And those were the, really, the three, not all of them, but the three major complaint areas for the homeowners that are currently living there.
And I guess to give a little history on this real quickly, the letter of credit came about because, I want to say, seven to eight years ago, the same development was in front of the commissioners, and the commissioners hired an independent attorney to sit down and work out these issues. It was the same threat of a moratorium on this, and they were trying to actually work out and sign an agreement. What ended up happening was the letter of credit came about with this.
So, okay, first question, on the letter of credit, any agreement that would be reached, we would probably have the letter of credit extended, and with the new buyer of the lots, because the builders just buying the lots, right?
Correct.
So, how...
This would be with, BUDS Plus would be our, however we were to work out the letter of credit or the bond, or whatever may be, the extension of that.
Okay.
What would end up being with BUDS Plus? My rough understanding of the potential buyer of the lots is they're just buying lots.
Correct. They're buying all of the lots.
Buying all the remaining lots, but they are not taking the place of the developer.
Correct. So, we need to make sure that the dollar amount that we're requesting from a bond is going to be enough to be able to do what we need to do out there for the roads. And then my next question with regards to the paving of the roads, where in the subdivision life cycle would we be doing that surface course of pavement? Would it be, do we need to have a certain percentage of lots done? Because I know that's how some developments read, but I'm thinking of the timing situation here.
There was, one of the things I was hunting, and I mentioned that past history, when we were looking at that agreement seven, eight years ago, when it was under Commissioner Harper, working with Attorney Rinkenberger at the time, that we were looking at 80% as being the number that would kick in when they had to do all of this work. That never did come about as a formal agreement, because what was accepted was the letter of credit that is being held today.
Okay, so...
They're at approximately 72% right now of the lots.
So, is the current roads out there now, are they, you know, would we, I mean, anytime you go in and you do surface course, you're going to have to do some, you're going to have to do some subbase work anyway, just for soft spots and other things, but is there, could some of the repair work be done immediately, and then wait for a certain threshold for the surface course to go on? Because I know, the surface course is always a tough thing, because you don't want to put it on too early with the construction traffic coming up, and then your surface course gets beat up. So, I just want to make sure that we have a pretty tight plan to be able to get some somewhat maybe short-term relief on some of the issues on the roads, and then go forward.
There is a pretty significant amount of base work that could be done.
Yes, and that's going to be part of the discussions with BUDS Plus now, because I mean, it's either, I mean, to a large extent, it's either do some, you know, do some base work now, and/or the bond may have to be not, would not potentially be enough, because, you know, again, because this subdivision's been in turmoil, the binder's been down for 10 years. It's had 70% of this subdivision's been, you know, built out, been driving on this bind, you know, on the subbase since, for 10 years, so it's showing some age, as if anything 10 years old would start showing some age. So, those are the conversations that I need to have with Attorney Ferengren.
Okay.
Again, we want the new person to buy the lots and build these houses. That's ultimately the fix of this subdivision, but we just got to make sure the county's protected, these are going to be county roads, we're going to be responsible for them, and we just want to make sure that those i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
Well, I have some, I'm asking a lot of questions. I've lived in a subdivision in D'alborazo for nine years that went through the same thing.
Right.
And we're just finally getting the surface course put on, and the last road that's not being done this year, of course, is the one that I live on, but, that's probably for a reason, too. Who knows? But I just, I sympathize with the folks out there, because I've had to live that same thing in my life, and it's frustrating, and it's, we would hope for better than that. So, I say, good luck, let's try to wrap this thing up, and let's do the citizens out there a good job, and let's try to get this thing worked out.
So, what do we need, a motion to continue?
Continue at the next commissioners' meeting.
So much.
Second. We have a motion in a second to continue the Tower Meadows subdivision recommendation for building permit moratorium, based on the fact that the county's council and the developers' council will get together and work out an agreement. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Bill. Last on the list is Attorney Tim, oh boy, Chris X. Chris X. I should have known that, Tim, thanks. Porter County Bar Association, you have the floor, sir.
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm Scott.
Hello.
I'm the president, or current president of the Porter County Bar Association. I have inherited a task from our previous president. As you, some of you may or may not know, longtime court administrator Linda McKitty passed last year. The bar association wanted to honor her in some way, but we couldn't get the typical letters of honor that we get from the Supreme Court, because she was not a member of the state bar. So, what they wanted to do was have a memorial tree planted in her honor, somewhere on the court grounds. I've now been, recently been informed that we had, I had to come to you for approval, and I'm assuming, don't hold me to this, but I'm assuming that then after that, we would go through the Board of Works, because we don't have a specific tree in mind, we would love to keep it within their general plan.
We don't have a Board of Works.
Okay.
We are...
We would prefer to just write a check, to have that taken care of, because, you know, we want to make sure that the grounds stay within the same general look and feel, we don't want to interfere with that at all. And we notice that, you know, there are some other memorial plaques there, so that's why I'm here today, seeking approval and guidance along those lines.
We would...
Well, I planted 15 crab apple trees on that lawn. And I think you're suggesting that you make a donation, we'll have our building department take care of it, because I think the placement's going to be, I mean, the space out there right now is kind of tight, but I think there's a tree or two that maybe we can take out and replace it with a new tree and put...
Again, we are willing to yield to whatever, whatever requirements they may have, and if they want to just submit a bill at the end, that'd be great.
Well, Tim, if you leave us with your name and contact information, we'll give it to our building superintendent and have him reach out to you, and we'll take care of it.
We'll do that.
Okay. Do we need to vote on it, you think? Open the floor.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation and do the stuff that needs to be taken to plant the tree.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Have a good one. That is, any other folks wishing to address this board at this time? With that, we are in recess.